... meeting Monday, December 22, 2014. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton. Gary Ellingson is excused. Chester Norakis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
And Wes Ryan.
Here. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Turned out to be such a beautiful day after all that rain and wind. And for those watching on cable and streaming live on the Internet. Our next agenda item is comments from citizens present. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen, and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their time to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a councillor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. If it is your desire that your comments be part of the public record, I would ask you to wait for the specific public hearing, public comment, agenda item to make your comments. Otherwise, you are certainly free to make your comments during this time. We have, let's see, Diana Hinton, and that's probably for the later hearing, and Mr. Hoover.
Actually, Mayor, I believe Diana wanted to speak under comments from citizens present because she wanted to speak for close to five minutes.
Oh, okay. It just won't be part of the record of that item. But we'll talk-- go ahead, Jim. Why don't you go, and then we'll come back. Come on.
Mayor Anderson, members of the city council, I'd like to say Merry Christmas a couple days early, but I'm excited. I'm here tonight to speak in response to a couple of things that I've heard over the last couple of months regarding voting. My testimony tonight is prompted by the article that was in the NewsGuard about the survey that was sent out to the people of Lincoln City, and a reference made by Mr. Hawker, the city manager, that it was sent out to the voters of Lincoln City because they choose the city council, and they are a good test of the pulse, and much of that's a word he used, of what's going on. And I would like to propose that a good representation of the people in the city of Lincoln City are the people who actually pay the taxes, that support the projects that the city council undertakes, that keeps the infrastructure going, keeps the staff going, and that in the future, if we're going to survey people, that may be surveying the taxpayers of the city of Lincoln City on a survey as opposed to the voters of the city of Lincoln City might be a better representative sample. I was taught years ago that there's a number of ways that people vote. We have the opportunity in an election to put our name on a ballot, but that's not the only way people vote. People get to vote with their time. It's seen in campaigns where people go out and spend time walking and going door-to-door supporting a candidate. It's done by letters to the editor, the time that people take to write a letter to the editor that influence people. It's done by the opportunity people have to put signs in their yard. And as a person who lives in the urban growth boundary but owns property in the city of Lincoln City, in the last election, one of the ways I had to vote, because I wasn't handed a ballot, yet I paid taxes in the city of Lincoln City, was by placing a yard sign in my yard, or in the yard of a property that I own, supporting a candidate. Another way to vote. Another way to vote is by calling people. So if we're going to survey the people of the city of Lincoln City in the future, I would encourage the city to include more than just the registered voters, but actually include the property owners who are responsible for the finances, and quite often the people that keep the wheels turning by continuing to pay property taxes in the city of Lincoln City. Thank you very much for the time to give some testimony, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. It's always nice to have differing opinions. Addressing your concern to talk longer than the five minutes, if I read your sign-in, you're representing the neighborhood association, right? So with that, you know, you'd get more time, not a lot, but I'd give you more time during the public hearing process. That way, we capture it during-- of record. Is that all right? Anyone else that didn't get to sign up at this-- for public comment, would like to come up now? Hearing, seeing none. Council, if we could, before we go to the next agenda item, I'd like to take just a minute and remind us again during this time of public comment. Last meeting, December 8, one of our most frequent commenters, Mr. Warner, had the opportunity to come and share with us a bunch of differing opinions again, and point out some information. And I know these are always well-intended, and as pointed to their issue as one can, but I was grabbed by one of the comments he made, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to maybe straighten it out to you, as well as to the public, if you'll bear with me. Mr. Warner said, here's the situation. Here's the situation that happened recently, and I feel taxpayers of Lincoln City should know about it. Mr. Hawker recently spent $9,218.63 of taxpayers' money hiring a local government personnel institute person to derail a possible class-action lawsuit against the VCB director. The majority of the employees of the VCB support this suit. The VCB director is retiring the first of the year, then Hawker extends her employment another six months because he said he can't find a replacement. She has paid approximately $140,000 in salaries and benefits, a department that costs taxpayers $650,000 annually. You would think that an assistant director could handle the job until a replacement is found. Well, I guess my observation on that is a couple of things. One, facts, as I found them to be, was in June of this year, the city became aware of some concerns and issues from employees about and in the VCB director and in the VCB area. The city values its employees and takes seriously any kind of accusations, concerns regarding those employees, and looks into them. The city retained an independent investigator from the local government law group. Now, that's a law firm with other services in Eugene, rather than an internal investigation, which could have been an option. And so that's where the money was spent. The group did not find any misconduct. There never was any litigation filed, nor any mention of a class-action lawsuit. Additionally, the director of the VCB announced her retirement some time ago, effective October And when a replacement was not hired, she was-- let's see, they're scheduled October. When we were unable to find a replacement in the last job search, the director was asked to continue work 12 hours per week through the end of the year. That's the end of this month, which she agreed to do. So I guess I'd just point out that you can't believe everything that's said. There's some threads of truth in everyone's statements, and again, I would hope citizens, as they come across this kind of stuff, that they feel free to ask about them, rather than jumping to conclusion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Also, he infers that it's the taxpayers' money that's being used for that, and that that's local taxpayers, when in fact, that money comes out of the VCB budget, which is primarily made up of TRT tax, which is paid by tourists rather than by local taxpayers.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on, then, let's do the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items of a repeat or routine nature considered under a single action. A councillor may remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration upon request. The consent agenda consists of, number one, Amendment Number One to Oregon Department of Transportation Cooperative Improvement Utility Agreement, South 23rd to South 35th. And number two, a grant application, Lincoln County Board of Commissioners Emergency Preparedness Grant 1415. Anybody wish to remove an item?
I'd like to pull number one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I would move that we pass the consent agenda, which consists of item number two.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda consisting of item number two, grant application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. Hearing, none. We have then a-- number one is Amendment One to the Oregon Department of Transportation. Mr. Norakis?
I'd just like to point out, Mr. Mayor, that the city and the Oregon Department of Transportation entered into a cooperative improvement agreement for the US 101 Southeast 23rd Drive, Southwest 35th Street project. And this amendment basically decreases the city's cost of that project by $277,327. Construction work involving the city's utilities is about 95% complete, so the final costs may vary, but I'd just like to thank Public Works and whoever else was involved in saving this more than a quarter million dollars on this successful project.
I agree, Mr. Norakis. A couple of things if I could add. That's savings off the estimate that we originally worked with on ODOT, because as council may recall, we hired ODOT, as they had trenches open to move some of our utilities, and they had given an estimate, because we needed that, of, you know, close to half a million dollars. So getting that reduced. Plus, I would say, we shouldn't forget that part of the savings was a result of the 2006 timeframe that we were asked to move these, some utilities, and have since changed the new design, changed those, and ODOT saw value in, in essence, crediting us for that expenditure. So you're right, close to over half, a quarter of a million dollars in savings. I think that, again, bodes well with the relationship we've established with ODOT. So I'd entertain a-- any other questions on that, or I'd entertain a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second, Amendment One to the Oregon Department of Transportation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. Hearing, none. Thank you. I might point out, before we do the next special order of business, if anyone's in the audience looking and waiting for item 11 on the agenda, which is a public hearing to receive public comment on city-initiated proposal to rezone, this is the VR zone. That's not going to happen. We'll continue that to January 26, 2015. So if you're waiting, you don't need to.
And the reason for that is the planning commission did not act, and because the planning commission has not yet made a recommendation, the city council will advertise it to a date certain, because it was advertised for today at this time.
We have now special order of business in this Northwest Harbor design, PowerPoint.
Good evening. Wanted to come back to council and give them the final design for a project we've been working on for a couple of years now. It's improvements to Northwest Harbor between 21st and 15th. Now, we broke it up into two phases, and the first phase we're focusing on is the south end. We've extended the limits a little bit, so now we're calling it 17th, or 18th to 14th, 14th to 18th. So if you'll recall, last year, this time, we had completed a couple-- we had completed a couple neighborhood meetings. We hired a consultant, and really wanted to get a lot of public input into the improvements in this street. It's an already-built-out street, a lot of existing neighbors and activities. We were asked by council that the staff really do the design work, and take the information from the neighborhood meetings, and get more information from citizens and from residents, and that we did. Councillor Eggleton met us out in the field, too, and we did a walk-through, you know, foot-by-foot design with some of the neighbors and some of the property owners as well. So we had a really good handle on what was there, and how we could design those improvements. We also had another set of input from the Sustainability Committee. The Sustainability Committee is charged with implementing the Bike and Ped Program and plan. And so they're also real aware of the pedestrian bicycle aspect, and we've been back to them three times now with refinements of this design. I guess my point in telling this long story is, you know, these aren't easy, and you can-- it does pay to really look at every aspect and get as much input as you can, especially from people who live there or who have some expertise. So really grateful for all the input we got, and we feel like we've listened and been able to take it to the next level. So with that, I'm going to go through the final proposed design, and begin with the overall design criteria, the goals of this project, which were to balance the needs of the users. That included delivery trucks, service trucks, people who live on that road, as well as bicyclists and residences, tourists, and property owners. We also had some-- have some right-of-way that extends to the ocean from harbor, and we wanted to preserve those viewpoints and make sure that those rights of ways were seen and visual, so the public knew that that was right-of-way. There was also a lot of encroachment over the years. Sometimes what happens is, we have 40 feet of right-of-way, but as things get built out, people might start taking a few feet, you know, into the right-of-way and using their property for the benefit of their property. And so this, we didn't have a lot of extra right-of-way here, so we had to take that back and design to the full right-of-way width. We wanted to ensure that existing driveways and accesses were preserved or improved. We didn't want to come in and change people's driveways, especially parking lots. There's a lot of businesses on the beach side. So that was a challenge. I think we've gotten some really good designs, and a lot of cooperation with the property owners. We also, based on feedback from the public and from council, wanted to preserve that on-street parking. One of the questions was, do we make a wider sidewalk and lose the on-street parking, or how valuable is that on-stream parking? And we heard that the on-street parking was very valuable, and also can be used as a traffic calming, and actually turned into part of our design feature. So it worked out well. So what we have in the existing condition is the problem, I guess the problem statement was a lack of continuous pedestrian walkways, forcing vehicles and pedestrians to share the roadway. We had confusing-- have confusing intersection at Northwest 15th. This is viewing north at 15th. This is the beach access. And here's just an example of where there's no real walkway for pedestrians. This is a little bit of sidewalk on the east side, but it doesn't-- it was only a couple blocks, or a couple houses that put that walkway in, and it didn't continue.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry, really? Sorry about that. Yeah, so these were examples of just what exists today and what we're trying to improve. Here's a picture of the Coho. I wanted to point that out, where the owner of the Coho actually redesigned the parking lot and reconstructed it this year in anticipation for this project. So where you see those curb stops, those will be removed, but that is where the parking did stick out. So we moved that back, and now we have room for a sidewalk. So here are the improvements that we made, and I'm going to walk it through. This is the overall view. The red is new sidewalk. The gray is existing sidewalk, and that green is a little additional bulb-outs, not true bulb-outs, but an extensions at the intersections to better define those intersections. I'm going to look at these in a more closer view. We tried to make this as viewable to the audience as possible, but this is also going to be-- this is available on the website. It's in the PowerPoint presentation folder, and also available at Public Works, if they want to come in and take a look at the design. So the red, again, is new sidewalk. The idea here is for-- and we looked a lot of different alternatives to how to get accessible route from harbor, from 15th, crossing harbor, and to the beach access. So we decided to do was continue that sidewalk along the-- along that north boundary, I mean, along that west boundary. And where the beach access is here, it'll be a little-- it will be like a driveway, a little raised lip. It'll allow some drainage to follow along and hit better storm drain improvements on this section. There won't be any more dipping. There won't be that big dip storm grade that's there. That's going. That is right here. And one of the other features I want to point out is there was really-- it was best to go ahead and pull back this wall, and pull back this bank right here, and go ahead and put in a retaining wall here, opening this up for site distance was pretty much the only way to have an ADA-accessible intersection. And so while, yes, a retaining wall is expensive, it completes the beach access. I think we'll be really happy with it. So again, existing sidewalks, new sidewalks, improved driveways. Most of driveways will be similar. All the property owners have agreed. If we've narrowed their driveways down, they've agreed to the location and where. The other cool feature here is we've allowed on-street parking in this section. This is at Northwest 16th, to be on the east side, right? And we're going to tick it, put tick marks in, so they're defined parking spaces, and just tiny little bulb-outs to keep traffic in the travel lane and define the parking. Then, at 17th, the on-street parking switches over to the west side. All along the center line, the center lane stays constant, center line. So the features in total is, we're going to be putting in 3,700 square feet of new sidewalk, about 900 feet of new curb and gutter, about 300 feet of new storm pipe, five new catch basins. The retaining wall is about 100 feet. It's from about four to eight feet in height. One of the things that started this project is the street is very cut up. It was on the top list for overlay, so it's not-- the pavement is not in good shape, and so we'll be overlaying. We've created now 14 dedicated parking spots, and over 1,000 linear feet of continuous sidewalk. So the schedule is now to complete this design. We're still working on the retaining wall design, but we'll complete that, and we hope to be opening the bids in February, and coming back to council to approve a construction award in March, and have it completed before June. That's the goal.
Janelle, a question. Can you go back to that 14th and 15th Street intersection there?
Yeah.
The sidewalk that's on the south side there, going up to 15th from 14th, the red, it seems like it goes nowhere. Now, is-- does that continue up to the crosswalk so that they go across that way, or do they have to go across back there in the middle of that red line?
Okay, so what the gray-- this is existing sidewalk down here, that gray.
That's where the bollards are.
That's where the bollards are.
Okay.
Now, we're going to build this red, so that's going to be new, and it'll terminate in that wide spot, quasi-parking area there. So it will just go to the shoulder of the road there, that little parking area, just at the top of that hill. And then the blue is where the retaining wall is. So we're going to have proposed-- so we're going to have two places to cross. One is going to be here, so you can go to the bollard landing area on the west side of the beach access, so people coming down here can cross here. And also, they can cross, you know, if they're coming from harbor, from the north, they can cross here. So it'll really open this up, and while it does technically stop there, it'll make sense to stop there, that sidewalk. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And then another question is that parking area that's just to the south of the end of that red, new sidewalk. People park there during the summer particularly, and they park in all different directions. Sometimes it's diagonal, sometimes it's horizontal. Is there some way that we can design that and make better use of it?
Yes, we can. We skirted that a little bit because what happened was, we paved a gravel section, because there was a lot of gravel that was kicking out. People were parking there anyway. So we paved it, but we need to go through site plan when you create more than two parking spots. So to tick it, to mark it, we've got to go through a little more of a process, and make sure we've got our ADA parking covered. So we can do that. We can do that, and we've talked about that. And not part of this project, per se, but we could add it to there, so.
Well, it might encourage people to not drive down onto the beach and get stuck if they can park up above, if there's more parking up above.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's part of the whole goal here, is to really define where there's parking, give people more options, more clarity on where to park, where to walk. So, but for right now, that's not part of the scope of this project, but we could do it any time. It doesn't have to be with us.
Thank you.
Chester?
Stephanie, the new landscape wall next to the motel parking lot there, is that going to be the eight-foot wall?
Correct. Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. No, no. This is the eight-foot-- this is a small landscape wall, just a few feet. It's just going to clean up that area, and that's why we defined it as landscape wall, because it's going to be less than four feet, and--
And the wall across the road is going to be eight feet?
This is going to be eight feet. Yeah, this is really tall.
Okay, okay. And could you go to the next slide, 16th? What are the green crescents on the lower portion there?
So those are showing that we're going to bring that curb, that we're going to create a new curb line, not a sidewalk there, but just extend that curb. And what that'll do is, and just landscape, or create, or continue with whatever's going on in people's frontage. We're not going to make a big feature here, just outline the curb. And what that does is defines the intersection better for 16th, and then it gets people out in the travel lane, and then allows for protection on these parking spots. So we're doing that here for these two spots, and then we're, you know, bringing that curb out, defining that intersection, and defining the parking zone.
And so those are modified bulb-outs?
Those are-- yeah, yeah, but, yeah, they're-- they're not as bulb-y as bulb-outs could be, they're--
The traffic calming, traffic calming device?
Right. And the idea is to align-- And the idea is to align it to that eight feet where the width of the parking stalls here is eight feet. So we want to get traffic out there, you know.
Away from the parked cars.
Away from the parked cars. And give that parking some protection and some obviousness.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I think towards one of the last slides, you said the number of parking spaces were in total? Yeah, I don't remember now.
14, then that's just between 15th and 18th. So will there be more as we continue the project to 21st?
So, I mean, that's nice to see that. But the other side of the coin is, are there any deleted? Because even your bulb outs that you just talked about really weren't parking spaces there. People didn't park that close to the curb, as I recall, but maybe they did. So are we losing any parking spaces in this design?
Well, I did, I did look at that. We're really not. We're really not losing any of the area that was dedicated to parking or possible for parking.
Right.
Where there's driveways, where there's some, there are some places that are yellow striped, there's just not room. People obviously didn't park there. But pretty much people parked along any of the unmarked areas. So this just defines those. I don't think we're losing.
Yeah.
I know we're not losing area.
And I didn't notice that you're changing the width of the street at all, at least in this section. So I'm wondering about, you know, you talked a little about it, about capturing the encroachment, recapturing. Where are you recapturing encroachment on this design?
Well, really, the only place is in front of the Coho.
Okay.
There wasn't a lot of encroachment. Where we're putting in new sidewalk, there was something there and you could call it what, some of it was encrochi kind of stuff.
But that's what we're using is to get that sidewalk in there, which leveling it out and, okay, that's.
Right, right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's, I think it's shadow, isn't it? That the sidewalk is going through, the dark space?
Shadow.
Is that shadow from the building?
Yes, that's a shadow.
First I thought, I'm going, why are we going through a building?
In fact, that's the existing Coho.
Right, but that's just the shadow that was thrown from this picture. Okay, got it now.
Yeah. That gray speckled is, that's existing sidewalk. So we, another feature, just to go on a little bit here, is we didn't take anything out that we, that property owners had recently put in, where there's new sidewalk, we matched it up. So we're using everything that was constructed with improvements, yeah.
Councilor Eggleton, your thoughts of this? You've been involved and, can you get up to the mic? Can you?
Ballabout on 16th. Pull that mic. Pull the mic into him.
I'm not real crazy about that ballabout on 16th, because that's going to be hard corner to get around all the time, driving up there.
Going north or either one?
East.
Oh.
I don't want to come around, because that is, you know, it's a dead-end street. That's the way we enter most of the time, is from Harbor.
So your concern is turning onto 16th or leaving 16th?
Both.
Both.
And then the ballabout really covers all the land of the house right on the corner there on the, on the right-hand side. When you're talking about parking, sometimes a car does park from where that line is about halfway up to that ballabout. And the guy's mailbox, you can barely see it in that picture is there. Now he won't have, now, where's he even put his mailbox on his property now? Where does the mailman deliver?
I don't know. I don't know that detail, Mr. Eggleton. I will, I will look to see if there's some way, we looked pretty closely at this intersection.
When we drive out 16th, we're going to go into that opposite lane almost every time then?
I think it's a little more exaggerated in this plan than in the design than you'll realize. But what I can do, I know what I can do is actually, I'll take some white paint and mark it in the street in situ at the site, and we can take a look at that. I mean, we certainly tried to minimize addition, you know, impacts to the property owners and people who use that street. So if that's going to be too hard a thing to navigate, we can pull it back. So we'll definitely take that and I'll meet you out there, we'll.
One time a school bus, a school bus used to come around that corner all the time, too. Right now, they're not, but they were.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be a tighter radius. There's no doubt about it. But I've got, we've got to get traffic away, I mean, because people need to be able to expect, you know, and to find these parking places. So if we don't have that, we've got people hugging that corner and no real way to get them out into that lane. I think when you see it in the field, it won't look as bad as it looks in this map, but I would like to mark this on the pavement with some white paint just to show what we're proposing.
When are you going to do that?
I can, that anytime, as long as it's not pouring down rain, that paint will stick. So, next week?
It'd be fine.
Yeah, or this week even. Kind of, deal with the driveway. That's why we came back to you. I know it's kind of tedious to go through these designs, but we want this to work for everybody and listen to all input. So let's get this one figured out.
Stephanie, I think you did a good job of blending that sidewalk into the other existing that was just put in there. And I like the way where you went across the Coho. I think you did a good job there.
Yeah, good.
And Stephanie, the fact that Harbor's on an angle to 16th makes it difficult to manage that turn as well, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. You're really, though, you're pretty teed up, but you're right. You still, the angle, there is an angle at 16th. So I do want to check that radius and make sure, as you said, we're not putting people out into the oncoming lane or crossing that center lane to be able to make an easy right out of 16th or north out of 16th.
Councilor Sprague?
I'm just wondering what day she's going to meet me out there again so we can check this out.
We'll make, we'll, let's schedule it like this week, actually. This week is the best.
She'll call you.
Yeah, I will, I promise.
Councilor Sprague?
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Stephanie, I apologize. I called you Janelle earlier. I don't know what I was thinking about. On encroachment, I thought there was some encroachment on the east side of Harbor as well. Why are we not treating that while we're going through this whole process?
Well, we, we are, we are. I didn't go into that too much. What's going on, most of the east side, there was an existing curb. There is an existing curb. And that curb is pretty much lined up with the right-of-way edge. There were some retaining walls that had a lot of shrubbery that grew, was growing three or four feet out in, into that, you know, wide beyond that curb. So a lot of it's just cleaning that up, cutting that shrubbery back and redefining that curb, because that curb is the edge of the right-of-way. So it's more of a cleanup. And then there's a couple, this driveway right here between 17th and 18th, they have, that was their access and their parking for their two residences there. And so we maintained that. It's kind of on-street, off-street parking. It's on their private property, but it accessed quite, it's accessed dependent on keeping a real wide driveway there, so we kept that one. There's some stairs you see right here. We're cleaning up this, these stairs, we're going to, those were coming out a little too far. We're going to clean those up. So there were some things on the east side. It just wasn't as pronounced as some of the west side.
One other question. If you were to redesign that, that bulb out there on, is it 16th? I think it's 16th. Made that more of a, I guess, bring that in about five or six feet, whatever it is, and then go to the very end of that parking thing, parking space.
Yeah.
Would that involve having to acquire property?
No, it shouldn't.
Because that way, the turn would be easier and it wouldn't throw people out towards the oncoming lane on Harbor.
Yeah, the edge, let's see, where, sorry, the edge of the way there, just give me one second here. So where, so the back of that green, that green hatched, that's the property line essentially.
Okay, so if you just.
So we just maybe.
Continue that arc to the top of that, then go on over to the top of that marked parking space.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
That way, it would be an easier turn.
Just go like that, yeah.
Yeah, well, I would, I would actually move it right out to the top of that line that's.
Right here?
Yeah, now just go across, right to the, right there.
Just kind of come out like that?
Go.
Make something similar to what we've made here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would make that a lot easier.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's interesting, in this picture over here, that looks like it really projects out. But I'm looking at the feed because it's kind of hard to see this. It's a much more rounded here.
Huh.
It's a totally, and people out there are probably going, what are you talking about? Because this is a nice, gentle, rounded area as opposed to that which looks like a mountain peak. So I don't know which is the true design. If it's this design that I'm looking at, then it shouldn't be an issue. If it's that pronounced, then it could become an issue. But I don't know why there's a difference between the two pictures, but there is. And I'm, I just wanted to point that out, that if somebody is looking at home, the picture that we're looking at, this roundabout or this bulb out, looks like a mountain peak rather than a nice, gentle, rounded.
Well, Stephanie, I think your offer to meet with Gordy and paint or chalk it or something so they can see, and then understanding the option that Councilor Sprague has put forth, at least a couple of things to look there. But otherwise, you know, I think it's a nice, nice move.
You bet.
So.
Thank you for the input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Just one other question.
Okay.
What time do we, what's the time schedule looking like to continue that up to the motel?
We can, that's pretty much designed to, I mean, it's, we can, we can follow the heels of this project with that second half very shortly, as soon as we'll probably need, we'll need more budget money than we have in this year's budget. So I'm anticipating, the design is essentially done. And so as soon as we can get the budget money and get that constructed, we will.
Good.
Again, because this was the tough one with that intersection, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we were real focused on the 15th Street and getting that alignment established, so, yeah, we can come right behind it and finish up to 21st. I'm really excited.
Thank you for putting the time into it, because it seems like a better resolution. All right, moving on, we have an appointment to the transit room tax board. Councilor Norikis and I met with and interviewed Beverly Cohen, who's an applicant, was the actually only applicant for this position. She's an existing committee member now and board member and was asked to renew. She's been on, on the board for quite some time. And this board doesn't meet very often, but they're vital because they would handle any kind of disputes having to do with the transit room tax. And Councilor Ryan, as I recall, you were at one time on that committee as well.
Chairman of it, yes.
So, but Mr. Norikis, do you have anything you want to add?
I believe Beverly's a very valuable member of this committee. She's got a great deal of experience and is willing to continue, so I'm, I'm happy that she's continuing to volunteer.
Great. I'd entertain a motion to approve the recommendation to have Beverly Cohen on the transit room tax board.
So moved.
Second it.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none, thank you. And then we have the Spyglass Open Space Thinning Project.
Good evening.
I'm going to have to get him an IBEW license.
The city manager asked me to talk with you this evening and get your go-ahead on the proposed thinning project for Spyglass. And this would happen, be happening this summer. Spyglass Open Space, if you're not all familiar with it, is over by the high school and it's quite a large open space. And it is one of those open spaces that we purchased with our open space bond funds. The objectives were to preserve forest, wetland, and riparian corridors, to enhance wildlife habitat, protect adjoining residential areas, and to provide for public recreation, generally a passive recreation in the, in the open spaces. As you know, we did two thinning projects. Our forester calls them harvest projects and we call them thinning projects. But the goals of the projects are the same. And those are to enhance tree vigor, to promote wind firmness, enhance forest structure, enhance wildlife habitat, and again, to provide for public recreation. The, the forest that we purchased with our open space money tended to be uniform stands, pretty much dominated by one species or a couple species. They tended to be too close together. There were spindly trees that were vulnerable to blow down. And they were so dense that the forest floor wasn't getting any light, and so that really inhibited the growth of that understory that makes good wildlife habitat. So lots of reasons here why we might want to make some improvement. As you know, we hired Mark Miller of Trout Mountain Forestry as our forestry consultant. And he did two projects already. In 2013, he did this Agnes Creek Open Space south of Bard Road. And I want to show you the before and after here. This is an aerial photo we had from 2007. The project was done in 2013, and you can see the opening now in the canopy that allows for some light to get in there. He preserved the hardiest of the trees, the largest typically. He also worked to get a good balance of species. He favors the Sitkas. And we have some dug fir in there as well. But anyway, he, you know, he did a good job. He went through and selected those that should remain and those to be removed. And then he hired a consultant who used light-touch equipment to reach in and cut off those trees and remove them in the gentlest way possible to preserve the sensitive open space. When they finished, they brought in a masticator, which is a machine that just ground up all the brush that was left by the thinning and grounded into wood chips and made a nice trail in there. So a lot of people have already been using the trail. In 2014, then, this year, we did north of Bard Road. And the same thing occurred and we ended up with another trail up on the north side. Now we're looking at Spyglass. Spyglass is quite a bit larger than the others, and it's about 50 acres in size. The total yield anticipated is a $400,000 board fee. Gross log sales, oh, yeah, I've got a animation here. And gross log sales will be $180,000, but we have logging and trucking expenses of And we have miscellaneous expenses of about $19,000. And we pay Mark Miller about $14,400 this time. Because it's larger, there are some economies in terms of his time and also the logger's time, plus the prices of. plus the prices of timber is up a little bit, and so if that holds, we expect to make more money. So our anticipated net is about $44,620 on this, and so it's really nice to be able to do something good for the forest, and also to actually have a net rather than, than a deficit on the project. So that is basically the project, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, and otherwise, we'd just like to have a go-ahead.
Any questions of council? Mr. Norakis?
Ms. Nicholson, I don't know if you can answer this or not, tree density averages 250 to 300 trees per acre and 200 acre, 280 to 360 square feet of basal area per acre, can you tell me what basal area is?
I'm afraid I can't.
All right, I'll save that for Mark.
Yeah, I guess you need to.
Thank you. I might remind the council and the public that, as noted, this would be the third thinning project that we've done, and I think if anybody's been through Agnes, both north and south, the, the positive impact that the thinning has done, because it's been a long time neglected, and this too is an area that we would look forward to, by thinning, have better use of for the, the public. And I note that the nice thing about these projects have been that we've enjoyed some positive revenue that stays in the, uh, the fund, isn't for future thinning and maintaining of the open space project. So it doesn't necessarily go to the general fund for any use, it stays with the open space maintenance.
And I should mention that we have, the log landings from both of these projects now are being used as parking areas. So there is a place to, right off of Bard Road, both north and south, where you can park your car and get out and walk the trail, unless you live in the neighborhood, and then you can just walk over, and I, and I understand a lot of people do, a lot of people have been enjoying them.
Mr. Mayor, it's interesting that this open space, I, when I moved to town in 85, one of the things I did was happened to live in that area and took a walk through there, and there was still some understory that was available, some, some brush, but it was dying out. And I recently went to the high school and took a walk, and it was, it was quite amazing that there was, there was hardly anything. So I think this is a great project, I certainly liked the way that he did Agnes Creek north and south, so I, I think this is a no-brainer.
Here, here.
I'd entertain a motion to continue with this thinning project, specifically the, what do you call it? Spyglass Open Space Thinning Project?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none.
Do you want to do a roll call on that?
Roll call, okay.
Norakis?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to have a roll call when we're actually making money, instead of spending it.
All right, we're down to, well, city manager reports, city attorney discussions. Thank you Chief Killian for sitting in, we won't necessarily call on you to do a report unless you've got one in your chest pocket or something you wanted to-
No, I'm just going to defer to the city attorney.
Oh, well, careful. The first order of business, I'll take, this is the contract approval, for those who've been following, we've hired a new city manager, Ron Chandler is the new city manager, he's one of the gentlemen from Utah, and will be joining us January 20th, he and his wife will be relocating to Lincoln City. But what we've included and need council approval is the, his contract, his employment contract, and that was in the packet. And any questions that council would have, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to approve so that I can sign and complete this transaction.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion with a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, how about a roll call, please?
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Norakis?
Yes.
And Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Then we have the Rocky Creek Project, Rocky Creek Project, and there's again, information in your packet. This is a water retention program of many years ago that we did jointly with Newport, or explored. It's been, had an on and off history, and it appears to be back on, at least in Newport's eyes, on a much smaller scale. So the, the question on the table is to whether we wanted, as Lincoln City, to join them in the process of looking to the future, using potentially the Rocky Creek project area, and this is Rocky Creek, south of Depot Bay, for retainage of water. In your packet, Mr. Hawker made arguments for both, an alternative is certainly retaining our own water in storage tanks throughout the, the city here. Again, reminding us all that it's during that week or so of peak usage in the summer that shortens, currently shortens our life expectancy of water from, you know, we're out 20-plus years now. Questions?
Not, not a question, I have a comment, and that is that the city was excited about the possibilities of going ahead with that back in, around the year 2000 or close to thereby. And Newport was, was gung ho, and so we went along with that, spent some money, and then Newport bailed. And so the, the project pretty much bailed, or terminated. Now we find out that it's still potentially viable, but Newport has said that they want to go ahead and do this on a smaller basis, but I fear that what happened once could happen again, so I'm not real excited about going ahead with Rocky Creek.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was on the council when we talked about this, and, and several times. But I'm, I'm of the same mind that Mr. Sprague is, with the caveat that I think we need to, instead of a scaled-down project, if we're going to, would do a project, it needs to be a much larger thing, because at some point or another, all of the communities along this section of the coast are going to need a big water source instead of a small one. If we're going to go that route, which would take 15, 20, 25 years to get all the necessary approvals, if ever, you would need a much bigger water source, I think, and so I, I think at this point, it's ill-thought-out, and I think we should continue pursuing water sources as we have, and trying to utilize conservation and, and more storage for our own community until sudden, something comes up.
Other thoughts, comments? So I don't hear anybody voicing desire to pursue, and, and that's what was being asked of us by Mr. Hawker, whether, to provide him direction, so I would interpret our direction would be not to pursue the venue.
I don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
No, consensus, as far as I'm concerned.
It's unanimous consent.
It is, yes, thank you. That's not to say that councils, you know, in the short run, not, ought to be looking towards water. And 20 years sounds like a long way out, but water and sewer is definitely two items that every community needs, functioning.
I still think the best viable option, if we could get the costs down, would be desalinization. I really do, I think that's the answer, but right now it's cost prohibitive.
Counselor, do you have anything else you want to enter in, in that area?
Item, on Monday, actually, it was on the 16th, Tuesday, the Planning Commission approved the final master, PUD master plan for Logan Park. The Logan Park annexation, the approval was conditioned on the city council approving the annexation, comprehensive plan map change, and zone change. So there is now a final order of the Planning Commission, it will be the final decision of the city on the PUD master plan, unless it's appealed and/or called up by the city council. The notice of decision was sent out today, so we don't know if there'll be a, an appeal. But you have the ability to call up a decision, and I'll just read that to you. The city council may by motion call up a decision of the Planning Commission on a quasi-judicial land use application, review of which shall be in the form of an appeal, reviewed de novo, or on the record as the council determines appropriate. The motion shall set the date, time, and place of hearing. So you have a final decision by the Planning Commission, however, before they made their final order, both the attorney and the planner for Logan Park addressed the Planning Commission under public forum, and they spoke about the project. Now, the hearing was closed, and the record was closed, and so that conversation that they had with the Planning Commission was ex parte, it was outside of the hearing. Other interested parties were not there, did not get to participate, so I believe that constitutes a substantive error. The way you can cure this problem is to call it up and have a de novo hearing before the city council. I know that the annexation and zone change is currently scheduled for the 26th at 6:00 PM. I, I'm not sure if staff can make the notice requirement for the 26th, but I think if staff can make that advertisement, then I think, you know, an appropriate motion would be to move, to call up the, the decision of the Planning Commission on the Logan Park, and to schedule the hearing at the same time as the annexation, comp plan amendment, and zone change, 6:00 PM on January 26th in these chambers.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion with a second, discussion. What this would do is then bring to the city council all three or four entities at once, the question of annexation, the question of zone change, the master plan, which is this one.
Yes, and, and you don't, in order to fulfill the Planning Commission's recommendation, which was that all these things be tied together with a development agreement, we have to have a advertised public hearing on a development agreement, so staff was already planning on advertising a development agreement for the 26th, so we'll do everything packaged together in a development agreement.
Okay. Any other questions? Probably do a roll call.
Norakis?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Eggleton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Appicello?
I believe that's it.
Okay, then we'll move into our public hearing, public comments, and we have a public hearing tonight. This is on the Coast Vineyard Land Exchange. And if I can call, this is an opportunity for the public comment on the city-initiated exchange of real property located in the north, to the north of Northeast 6th Drive, and is identified as Lincoln County Assessor's Map Number 071115AA00100-00. The proposal is to exchange approximately 9,400 square feet of the city-owned property for 9,400 square feet of adjacent undeveloped property owned by Coast Vineyard Church, located at 1505 Northeast 6th Drive, identified on Lincoln County Assessor's Map, The property values are not equal, Coast Vineyard Church will pay the difference in value over 10 years, and the city will hold a trustee. The city proposes to waive the payment if the church continues to operate the food pantry through December 2019. So calling this public hearing to order, check with council, are there any ex parte communication issues? And any conflict of interest issues? Councilor Norakis, I was just checking on any ex parte communication issues on this.
None, Mr. Mayor.
And conflict of interest? And how about actual bias, personal bias?
No, sir.
Okay. Why don't we then call for testimony?
Yeah, open the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing and call for-
I can, I can give a brief staff report if you'd like.
Okay, why don't you do it, then, Will?
In the council packet later on, there is a resolution, there are only a few paragraphs, but essentially, you're asking the public to comment on the proposed disposition of real property. This is a disposition to a not-for-profit organization. Essentially, it is an exchange of real property for equal square footage, as you read in the title. The properties do not have equal value, and the difference in value is to be paid at like 3,000-something a year, with the payment to be waived for operation of the food bank. Apparently, the city council had this discussion with the church, this organization, back in 2008, and these terms are discussed, and this process, 221725, requires a public hearing that the terms of the exchange be set out there, and that we request the public to comment on this proposed disposition. In order for you to go forward, you must have the public hearing, you must take into account any public comment, and you have to make one of two findings, in this case, I believe staff believes you can make both findings. The first finding is that the property is not necessary or needed for public use, and in that case, any exchange would have to be for equal value, and staff believes the value is equal. And then the alternative finding is that even without equal values, you can make the disposition of real property if the public interest will be furthered, and staff recommends that the operation of the food bank is something that furthers the public interest, and in consideration of that, we believe this is a, would be a good deal, and you can make the required findings. I would point out that the resolution says pay the specified amount for 10 years and can be waived. Staff recommends that you give credit back to 2009, because this is when essentially the deal was discussed, but was never formalized. So that's part of the consideration, again, value doesn't have to be equal if you find that it furthers the public interest. The staff does believe it is in furtherance of the public interest, and that the value is equal, because the operation of the food bank is worth at least the $3,000 payment a year. So with that stated, I'd ask that you take public comment, if there is any, and then move on later to deliberations and decision on the resolution.
Mr. Miller, would you care to come and forward and make comment, both?
Mayor Anderson, yeah, and council, I'm Tom Miller, the current president of the Vineyard Board of Directors. And we do oversee the Lincoln City Food Pantry, and we have since 2009, gratefully so. I'm here with my wife, Tilly Miller, who's the pantry manager, and also, yeah, in the back, Randy Williams, who is the operations manager at the pantry. We are certainly hoping for the approval of this resolution, and I believe it will be in the best interest of the community. in the best interest of the community. We're here to basically just answer any questions you might have from us, and just as a way of reminder maybe to some of the people that are listening on TV, that the pantry last year provided two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and forty thousand pounds of food to our community. That represented over a hundred, or over one thousand households and over twenty-six hundred individuals, and this year, those numbers are actually higher than two thousand and thirteen. Things are going well at the pantry. We always need more volunteers, and we're just excited to continue to serve our great community, so.
Well, thank you, and I'd say from council perspective and many citizens that we appreciate the, the work you've done and the organization of it. It's, I remember moving from different locations in turbulent times, disruptive times, not necessarily turbulent, prior to you taking on, so thank you for what you do there. Any questions of the Millers? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you so much.
Your Honor, while the Millers are here, I'll just point out that there would be one change to the resolution. We don't have the title reports for either property, and so the exchange is subject to acceptable title reports for both parcels.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make comment on this exchange? Hearing none, seeing none? Entertain a motion to close the hearing and record?
So moved. Second?
We have a motion to close the hearing and the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none, thank you. Discussion, again, information and detail is in the, the packet, the, the math and maps, and it's, I recall the discussion in two thousand and eight and, again, in, I think, two thousand and twelve, where we've talked about it, so now we're finally getting it done.
Mr. Mayor, I think this is a positive for the community.
It is, too. Thank you, I would agree. It's unfortunately such a need in the community, and it's nice to have someone working that has, as well as a stable location, so.
As treasurer of Angels Anonymous, I can tell you that there's a need out there.
Right. With that, then, certainly entertain a motion, oh, I guess I won't because it's a resolution, we'll just get to it later then, okay? Thank you. So then let's go to the other public hearing. We have, this is, um, public hearing to receive public comment on the request for a comprehensive plan and zone map amendment for the portion of the villages at Cascade Head. The request is to rezone thirty-five point four acres of land, commonly known as the Knoll, to open space.
You should have a script for this one.
Uh, I do.
It's a quasi judicial hearing.
Standby, if you will. This is the public hearing for file CPA slash ZC two oh one four dash oh two is now open. The public hearing concerns a request concerning a portion of the approved villages at Cascade Head planned development. The property owner is the city of Lincoln City, requests a change in plan and zoning map designation to open space for the thirty-five point four acres commonly known as the Knoll. Land is currently zoned R one seven point five, single-family residential, with a comprehensive plan designation of medium-density residential. On December sixteenth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter and forwarded a recommendation for approval. The City Council's role is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, the record and any written or oral comments or testimony, as well as information from staff and make a decision. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation, may adopt a different recommendation, or may take other action, including declining to make a decision. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters or required statements. Does this, does any of the council wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest or bias in this matter? Ex parte communication?
No.
Um, and personal conflict of interest?
No.
And actual personal bias?
No.
Are there any challenges? Hearing none, seeing none? How about, it should be the staff report, I assume?
I think we have a page missing here.
Two, three, four. So challenges, statements, the following statements are required to be made in the, shoot, what you want. So read through this. All right, um, thank you. "The following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to City Code and ORS one nine seven point seven six three five. Staff, uh, staff will now, will read a list of the applicable substantive criteria for the decision. All testimony, agreements and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria previously listed or such other criteria in the plan or land use regulations which the person believes applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to LUBA, the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the decision-maker to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the end of this hearing, any person who participated may request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument or evidence, or request that the record be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument or evidence. Before the staff report presents a report, I'd like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. A brochure outlining procedures is at the entrance of the council chambers. Generally, the order proceedings will be as follows. Preliminary matters and required statements, staff report, questions of staff, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, request of continuance or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, request to submit written argument, deliberation and decision. The city has established some time limits. The applicant will have fifteen minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time for rebuttal. After the appellant testifies, any, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If the council has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin stated your, stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy of the recorder, to the recorder. Please present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselors. Should start out saying that the applicable substantive criteria are the consistency with the statewide planning goals and consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. As you know, the city purchased the villages at Cascade Head property. One of the primary purposes of that was to obtain the, probably known as the Knoll. In this aerial photo, the, the sort of bald area, um, above, sort of towards the right near the top is the major part of the Knoll, or what people see from most areas of the city. As you can see, Rhodes End is immediately to the west and the Salmon River to the north. This is a view of the Knoll from the beach in Rhodes End, and this is a view of the city from the top of the Knoll. You can see down the beach, quite a ways down, the lake over to the east on the left here, and it's, it's a popular area for people to go to, to get a great view of the city. There's a trail that goes right up there from the end of Port Avenue, a very popular area to go hiking up there. This property is part of the villages at Cascade Head planned unit development. This map is the preliminary master plan for the villages at Cascade Head. If I can explain a little bit about the village's property, it's, uh, over, the villages as a whole is, was over four hundred acres. The city owns, recently purchased the, the majority of it. It was, it's, the master plan calls for the property to be developed in three phases, first phase being Rock Creek Village, which is down in the southern part of it, the second phase being Salmon Creek Village, which is the extreme eastern part, and then the third phase being this sort of northwestern part, which was Logan Creek Village. Procedurally, in nineteen ninety-six and then amended in nineteen ninety-eight, the villages at Cascade Head planned unit development was approved. The ninety-eight amendment limit, put a, a number, the, the plan called for eighteen hundred and twenty-nine dwelling units. Again, in each of the three phases, each, each of the three phases is to have its own refined preliminary master plan. There's, there's a preliminary master plan that's been approved for the entire development, and a refined preliminary master plan for Rock Creek Village at Phase One, this area again down here in the south, and then each of the villages is in turn to be divided into individual blocks. Each block would then get a final master plan. The council, or, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission, last week, while considering, in addition to considering the, this rezoning, also approved an amendment to the preliminary master plan for the overall project to take this area that we're talking about and put it for open space in the plan. Zooming in a little bit, you can see this is the, this is the area as a whole, Block N here is, is where the, where the Knoll is. And zooming in a little bit, this area, P eleven up here at the top, is a park area that the city owns, was deeded to the city back in nineteen ninety-six. It's about sixty acres, it's open space. The green area, various green areas going through here are wetlands and park areas that the plan calls to be set aside. There's this blue area which says WR on it, and that's, the original intent was for that to be water reservoir site, because there's not adequate capacity or pressure for the entire villages as, as proposed for build-out. In discussing this with the, with Public Works Department, the city engineer, they've concluded in the, what, twenty years since this was approved, that that's not a very good location for a water reservoir, and in fact, it's likely will be further over to the east would be a, a better area. But if you look, there's Port Lane, ends right here, actually curves around this way, there's a Salasie coming up. Port Lane ends here, and then, and this Block O, and again, the, the Knoll is up here. This, this little bite sort of taken out of the property is the, is a quarry owned by a, a private party. So what, zooming in a little bit further, what we're talking about is putting this thirty-five point four acres outlined in, in a heavier black here into, change the zoning to open space. One of the, or actually, the principal reason for that is that when the city purchased the property, we used about five hundred thousand dollars of open space bond funds, again, with the intention of, of getting the Knoll for open space, and this is, is making that, realizing that intent. You can see, this is, this is the property with the quarry on it. The trail is in blue that, that goes up to the, to the Knoll. There's also a trail that goes around into open space, into the open space we have to the north. There's a connection, but it does cross private property. It's hard to see on here, but actually, there's another trail that winds through here and, and hooks into this, this other open space property that we have. So the, the design, the shape of this proposed thirty-five point four acres is to include that trail, include all the trails within the, the open space, and also to, to have a connection, a major connection, so that the open space, existing open space flows into the, the proposed open space here. The water reservoir site would also become open space. One of the other major reasons and how this was, was, was the dimensions were selected were based on slope. The pink areas here are steep slope, with more than twenty percent slope, quite hard to, to build on. You also see that to the west of the, of the yellow line, which is the area of the proposed rezoning, there is an area of about, about seven, a little over seven acres, seven point four acres. I know you've got a number of comments in your packet about that area, and a number of people think that should be included in the, in the open space as well. It's about two hundred feet wide and about twelve hundred feet long. The intent of not including it was so that someday it would be available for, for residential development. At that size, you could probably get about twenty-five dwelling units into there. It will be relatively difficult to develop. It can't be developed like just, just run a cul-de-sac in. It can't be developed under our, our present ordinance because it's, it's, you can't have a cul-de-sac more than six hundred feet, and so what would have to happen is presumably a road coming off the end of Port here, I'm sorry, going by the quarry and into here, and then presumably it would, would connect down through the, the private property to the north, the owner of which has talked to us a number of times about the possibility of development of that property. So anything that would have to be done, anything would be done would have to be done probably in concert with that property owner. Also, given that it's part of the Logan Creek Village, it would be, which is the third phase, that would be probably many years out before anything like that happened. So the Planning Commission held this hearing on December sixteenth and recommended the rezoning, and this is just for your, sort of give you context. Port Lane, or, yeah, Port Lane comes up through here and actually ends right around in here. You can sort of see a little bit of the quarry here, so this would be the area to the west that would be kept available for development in here if, if that's your...
That's still quite steep, isn't it, Mr. Towson?
Yes, it is. If you look, you can see, there's still, there's still a lot of twenty percent slope in there. It's not an easy site to develop, and I think as we know, property in Lincoln City that's not developed, generally is not developed for a good reason at this point, and steep slopes would, is, is one reason. Also would require extension of water lines and sewer, the sewer does not run in, in Port Lane here, there's, these properties are on, on septic. There is sewer down in Rhodes End, further down the slope, but there, there is no sewer there, so it would be, it would be relatively expensive. I should say that... I should say that in the preliminary master plan for Villages at Cascade Head, Block N, the entire Block N, which is this area, so the area we're talking about for the, for the open space, this area on the west side and this area, is only proposed or only approved right now for 50 dwelling units. And they're described as 50 ocean view lots. So most of them presumably would have been on the west side of the Knoll to have that ocean view. So what's needed is a decision on whether to rezone the property to open space, and then exactly what area you want to include in the open space zone, which, whether it's the whole, whether it's the 35.4 acres. As I said, there's a number of people who've given you comments that want the area to the west of what staff has proposed to be included as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff?
Just, Mr. Mayor. I understand that this is open space, but kind of like, this is an area that is almost park-like. So, I mean, if we make it open space, we make it much more difficult to improve anything to get there. And I guess that's what I'm questioning. Is in the long run, would it be better to designate it as a park rather than open space?
If I could show you something, let me try to get. So the area, again, the 35 acres is here. The road ends here right now. There is, the trail, which is an old, old road, does go in here. The thought was that, and this area, which is not proposed for open space rezoning, but which is part of the Villages at Cascade Head, would be a likely area for like trailhead development, like a parking facility or whatever. The idea of zoning it to open space is just that it was purchased for open space as opposed to park.
Yeah, I guess I was questioning because I've walked up there a couple of times, and it's a very steep trail and difficult. So if you're a handicapped person, you're not going to bank it. You know, and so if we want people to enjoy that awesome view, if it's parked, then you are required to make it available, or I think, I think you are.
Well, it would be possible to improve that existing trail that I showed you that goes up there. I mean, that would be possible to improve that so people could drive up there if it was parked. It's not possible to do that if you do it open space.
Right, okay. And I guess that's what I was questioning. You know, so, I mean, I understand that it was purchased with open, you know, some of it was purchased with open space money, but it's just, it's such a lovely spot, and I guess I'm questioning whether we want to just lock it down as something that only a few can get to or something that everybody can get to. You know, that's, that's the quandary I have. And on the second, well, never mind.
Other questions, council or staff? Consider the staff and applicant.
Yes.
None, I guess. Let's go for some hearing, public hearing, those who may have signed up, and I'm assuming...
And council, I'd ask your indulgence, representing the Rhodes End Improvement Association, and like to give her some more time than the three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Diana Hinton, president for the Rhodes End Improvement Association, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the Knoll open space designation. The Knoll is a Rhodes End and Lincoln City icon, and appreciated and used by homeowners and visitors to Rhodes End alike. REIA supports the city's efforts to protect this wonderful area as open space. We value its attributes, which are many, such as its environmental benefit to the area providing wildlife habitat such as feeding and lounging for the elk and the deer, and shelter in the nearby trees. It may be of more significance as a unique grassy meadow for other animals such as the organ silver spot butterfly, which is listed as a threat, as threatened under the Endangered Species Act. And in addition, the Knoll provides water quality for all water systems below its location. This is a significant and sensitive area. It has remarkable scenic value as one can see a full view of the ocean unimpeded, 180 degrees of panoramic vista of the Pacific like none other in Lincoln City. It's a special place on this planet. It provides a designation for many hikers who seek less strenuous walk that greets them with a stupendous view. I can hike up there, so if I can do it, a lot of people can. The Knoll provides aesthetic value for those who view it from Rhodes End and from the beach. This is as important to Rhodes Enders as the view from the Knoll is down to the beach. Many of us have this view from our homes and have come to appreciate it and depend on it for its scenic beauty. When reviewing and revising the park's master plan, please include dedicated trails and access points. I think Richard Townsend described that as, that there will be those things, and preferably not the use of concrete. And, excuse me. In addition, REIA urges you to expand the open space boundary to include the strip of Villages' property immediately to the west. Rather than develop this strip, it should be added to the 35.4 acres of the Knoll open space, which would maintain protection for the entire area. To allow housing on this strip is not in keeping with the spirit of the proposed open space. To build in this strip would require a road for access which does not exist today. The staff report or application states that if the Knoll were developed, the traffic impacts and road building would be extensive. The same would be true if this western strip were to be developed. To introduce housing adjacent to the Knoll would also introduce noise and the business of people's everyday duties of life, such as mowing their lawns, blowing yard debris, starting engines, as well as barking dogs, hammering from building and repair, and other associated intrusive noise. This would not be consistent with the serenity the Knoll now provides. Development of the strip would also impact the view from the Knoll by exposing rooftops, fencing, and backyards to the immediate view of visitors. Development of the strip would mar the scenic beauty of the entire forested ridge that wraps around the east and the north side of Rhodes End and the popular tourist attraction of Rhodes End Beach. And I provided a photo for you, and it doesn't show the steepness of the slope as Richard's photos did, but we just wanted you to see the view from the beach up to the Knoll. Quite, quite beautiful. As stated in the staff report of the application, Lincoln City currently has an abundance of residential lots, and the supply would not be impacted by moving this area to open space. We appreciate the fact that the city is trying to recoup their investment in the Villages' property, but that should not be done at the expense of what the city is trying to protect. The proposed amendments with our suggestions will protect this lovely area for generations to come. And thank you again for the opportunity to testify, and happy holidays to you all.
Thank you very much for coming. Questions? And, Ms. Hinton, I hear your request to move the boundary west. Looking at the map that's up there, there's still more land to, potentially to be developed, you know, even west of the Villages' boundary.
Okay.
Correct? I mean, that's looking at the...
As far as I know, I think you'd have to ask Richard. I don't know what the designation is for all of that.
I was just trying to get a sense of, I hear your testimony and your desire. This has been, I think, 17 years of recorded residential PUD for development, and with no open space. So the city is bringing on the open space for all the reasons you've just stated eloquently. Thank you.
Exactly.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, does it, does it really matter, you know, at this point, expanding that, because there's still undeveloped property down to Rhodes End, first street there? And what a future developer may find is that it's too expensive anyway, though that has got to be prime, potentially, prime view lots.
Most certainly.
So I guess what I'm really trying to get is, where does it end?
At the boundary.
At the where?
At the western boundary.
Or at this proposed boundary. I guess, does it really make that much difference?
It does matter, because...
Go ahead, explain, help me with more.
If I could just answer your question a little more. In the second half of my testimony, I listed all the reasons that it does matter, and to be able to include it in the open space now would leave that area, including that strip of 7.4 acres. To include that would leave the view open for everyone who hikes up to the, hikes up to the Knoll. Because when you're up there and you're looking down, you could most certainly see and be distracted by the, a strip of houses if they were there. It would, it would change your experience, most definitely.
Yep, okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other testimony for or against where people didn't get a chance to sign up now would be the time? Okay. Is there any public agencies or other organizations? And I guess at this point, any requests to continue? Hearing none? Now to entertain a motion to close the hearing and the record?
Slow move.
Second. We've got a motion to close the hearing and record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. Hearing none. Discussion? Oh, yeah, discussion. We've got ordinance later, but...
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I intend to agree, where, I don't really think that that seven and a half acres is going to really matter to the total inventory of homes. If you've been on that hill, it's awfully steep. I wouldn't be, I'm not sure that you could build a home there based on a geotech survey to begin with. And there's plenty of land below that that is much easier to develop in the Rhodes End area. So I would, I would think that we should include the seven and a half, or roughly seven and a half acres into that if we can.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I agree with Mr. Ryan. I think that in order to build there, you're going to have to have some way to hook up sewer and water. And there's no, there's no access to that right now there, and I don't see any way that you could have septic facilities there unless you had some kind of a way to have the, that sand filtration process, and I'm not even sure that would work there in that steep slope. So I intend to agree.
Any other discussion, thoughts?
I'll just take the counterpoint. I would disagree. One, I don't, I think we're doing the right thing by carving off the Knoll and preserving it as open space. I think Councilor Ryan raised a good question about what kind of improvements can you make, you know, in an open space, but I, again, go to, you know, what we talked earlier about with thinning of the open spaces in those trails. Quite frankly, I hadn't thought of, is that accessible, make it accessible to everyone? And I don't know that we can always do that, but it was an excellent point. As far as, you know, we, the city bought this property for threefold, get some open space, especially this, for land banking, land at a low cost, for development, for workforce housing, and for market rate housing and commercial. I guess I would want to leave a decision whether you can, whether it's affordable to develop up to the developer. If it's not, you can bet you'll get, get it dedicated. I mean, for, there'll be trade-off. If it's, I'm assuming I heard from staff talk about some of those high properties in Rhodes End are on septic now. It'd love to have a reason to pull sewer lines up there and catch them, and what could be better than development of an area? Prime views, you go all over the Pacific coast and you see prime views, and they're very expensive, thus making it available for a developer to develop if somebody will pay the price. But I don't know that we need to make that decision. Quite frankly, I'm a little hesitant to take land, you know, off the market to that extent. I don't think that's a significant piece. And you may be right, a developer won't be able to develop, but then he'll use it as trade. Go ahead.
Well, perhaps, perhaps then, we're looking at the possibility of development of that piece of property maybe 15, 20 years down the pike, and that can always be determined later on as that it could be extended to open space. We could do that, that way.
Because it, as pointed out by staff, that by itself, it probably isn't developed, developable, but given that other undeveloped property around there, another landowner, and I mean, the property's been there for 17 years anyway, and a PUD approved, and hasn't even looked that way to think about development. So I guess, to me, it just keeps options open, is to try to get other services, you know, up and around.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you on your thoughts on that, 17.
I'm really torn here.
I know it.
The view out there is beautiful, and I say, I can't see looking down on top of the houses as closely as it would be, but then I also see, I'm looking at the property towards the west, and I think it's going to be a while before it ever gets developed or things like this. So, you know, I'm saying, you know, I have to say that, you know, the 35.4 acres, I agree with 100%, the other, I'm tossed up about.
Okay. Any other comments or...
I'd like to see that area remain open, and I believe Mr. Commissioner, Councilor Sprague is right, that I don't believe it's going to be developed in the near future. And if in the future we want to designate it open space, the council at that time can do so.
I just wanted to point out that what was advertised was 35 acres, which is why I was asking to look at the file. We could have advertised, I suppose, 42 acres or perhaps less, but it wasn't actually advertised that way. So I would have to tell you that if you wanted to add that, we'd probably want to give notice to people that we are considering that, because that's not what was advertised.
And, I mean, yeah, we could come back, or a council could come back and add in the future.
Essentially, yes. Any, just like you initiated this, any council could say, let's initiate the remainder of Pod N, basically, to be, because you saw it on the map, it was N, and this is just the remainder of N.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. We've got action on that a little later then. Okay?
Um, because it's a final, uh, I don't know if you typically do a motion on, when you also have an ordinance.
Yeah, we close the hearing, then-
Close the record.
We close the record, close the hearing. Uh, yeah. And then we'll get to the ordinance.
Okay.
Right. Uh, our next public hearing is, uh, this is, uh, to receive public comment on a city-initiated proposal to rezone three hundred and forty tax lots totaling approximately fifty-seven point five acres in the northwest quadrant to a newly created comprehensive plan and zoning map designation of Vacation Rental District VR. Planning files CPA and ZC, um, two thousand fourteen dash oh-three. And there's a request for, um, to continue this public hearing to January twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen. The reason being is because we haven't got it from, the planning commission hasn't pushed it up to us. But, uh, do we need to formally open, formally open the hearing and continue it? I think that's what we just did, but-
Yeah, I, I would go ahead and, and do that.
So, consider it formally opened, and I'd entertain a motion to continue, um, this hearing to January twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, this, these chambers, six P.M.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to continue, uh, continuance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. Thank you. All right. Uh, we have then some resolutions, um, and we start off with Resolution two thousand fourteen dash thirty-two, and City Recorder, Kathy, you wanted to read?
Yes, the, excuse me, the correct title for that is Resolution number twenty-fourteen dash thirty-two, a resolution declaring Exhibit A as surplus property, providing for exemption from Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter two point oh-five, Public Contracts, Competitive Bid Procedures, and Approving Disposal.
Thank you. Any motion or discussion or both?
Move that we accept Resolution twenty-fourteen thirty-two.
Is there a second?
Or adopt, I should say.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt with a second. Uh, so, any questions, discussion?
Yeah, please, Mr. Mayor. This, this Exhibit A indicates this being a two thousand and eight Dodge Durango.
Right.
Is that correct?
A vehicle, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And another item, too, the generator and transfer switch.
Oh, good. Thank you again.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Just a question. The, there's a, um, requirement that we go out for bids or something, and, and we're going around that. Why are we doing that? I think in the, in the thing that, uh, the clerk read that, that it said we were-
We're, we're just declaring this as surplus. We're not doing anything yet.
I understand that, but then she said something about, we did not, we were not going to follow the, the normal procedure or something of that sort. Maybe I misread that, misheard it.
A resolution declaring Exhibit A as surplus property, providing for exemption from Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter two point oh-five, Public Contracts, Competitive Bid Procedures, and Approving Disposal.
So, it's the, the exemption that I was asking about. Why, why are we worried about exempting ourselves from the code?
It's, uh, under the code, if it's worth over a thousand dollars, it has to come you, to you, which is outdated and silly, because we've updated all the other provisions of the public contracting code. So, what you're doing is authorizing disposition of the property, uh, because it's over a thousand dollars. And typically, the, the manner of doing that is, uh, through a competitive process. However, as you know, uh, department heads now have ten thousand dollars worth of public contracting authority, uh, so without, you know, even going to Mr. Hawker, they can make those contract decisions. And then Mr. Hawker has an authority up to, you know, he cut his own authority in half by resolution, but like a hundred thousand dollars. So, the exemption, I guess, is that, is that we don't have to go through a formal process to get rid of a, to, a vehicle worth two thousand five hundred dollars. We can use whatever processes we have, and it's, uh, we actually have two people competing right now with surplus property contracts that have been given to the city, kinda like one, I think the police uses currently, and then there's another vendor that would like to dispose of our property. So, there'll be a process, but it's not the formal process. So, thus the exemption.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. So, we have a, uh, motion on the table to accept Resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-two. Any other questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Norikus.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have Resolution two thousand fourteen dash thirty-three, a resolution adopting the supplemental budget of the City of Lincoln City for fiscal year two thousand fourteen dash two thousand fifteen, as approved by the City Council, and making appropriations.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution two thousand fourteen dash thirty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Norikus.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have Resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing budget transfers for the City of Lincoln City, Oregon, in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year budget.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-fourteen thirty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any discussion? Roll, uh, roll call, please.
Norikus.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Eggleton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have Resolution two thousand fourteen thirty-one, a resolution approving a real property exchange of approximately ninety-four hundred square feet of undeveloped land with Coast Vineyard Christian Fellowship pursuant to ORS two-two-one point seven-two-five and ORS two-seven-one point three-one-oh dash two-seven-one point three-five-oh.
Your Honor, if you do approve this resolution, I'd ask that you end, that, add to the end of paragraph three, uh, section three, the sentence, "This, this exchange is subject to acceptable title reports for both parcels."
I would move that we accept Resolution twenty-fourteen thirty-one with the statement the city attorney just made.
Second it.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Norikus.
Yes.
And Sprague.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Ordinances. Uh, we have, uh, some ordinances here. Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash twenty-five. This is second reading.
Okay, before we do second reading, uh, you asked me to look into, uh, the issue having to do with, uh, smoking during a special event. So, if you look at the ordinance, uh, section twelve, sixteen, oh-four-oh, the smoking prohibition, uh, the suggested language, if you wish to allow smoking in designated areas in a special event, uh, pursuant to a special event permit would be, and I'm just gonna read the sentence as it would occur, the second sentence would then read, "The no-smoking prohibition extends to all areas of any city park or facility where a special event such as festival, concert, or similar public event is occurring unless the special event permit expressly provides for designated smoking areas at the event." The caveat being, this would only be for outside events, uh, because the, uh, Oregon's state law prohibits smoking indoors and within ten feet of, uh, a public building.
Right.
So, that, that language would be added if you wish to accommodate someone who wanted to have a smoking area at a special event on a city park. Um, also, um, because I actually reserved the pool, I discovered that staff has the capability to reserve the pool and other facilities on less than ten days' notice. And they didn't want staff to be accused of violating the code if they can accommodate a customer request at the last minute. It is, after all, a revenue-producing function. Um, they shouldn't be required to process an application in less than ten days, but if they can do it, um, that's why I added the sentence, nothing in this section prohibits staff from processing an application on less than ten days' notice. And, uh, this is, uh, in paragraph four, uh, under applications. Um, so, I guess I could cross that off. Now, if, if that change is acceptable, then I'll read the title and you can, uh, if you wanna make a motion. So, this is the second reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title twelve, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Chapter twelve, sixteen, Park Use Regulations, Adding New Park Use Regulations and Distinguishing Between Exclusive Use Permit and Special Event Permit Triggers. Staff would be looking for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance and with the changes as read.
I would so move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, uh, with a second discussion. Wording, appreciate the revised wording.
Thank you.
Here, here.
No discussion. Uh, roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Norikus.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have a ordinance, two thousand fourteen dash thirty, first and second reading.
Hey, well, uh, basically, uh, Mr. Townsend put together an analysis, uh, preparing for the effectiveness of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash oh-seven, which was the safety standards you adopted back in May. So, he was doing his due diligence and doing an analysis of how he would exercise his discretion under that ordinance to approve a window opening that was less than the standard size currently required by the building code. Um, and he needed this thorough analysis. It's attached to the staff report. And, um, he sent it to me to review, and we talked about it, and we basically thought that the best way to implement this analysis would be simply to amend the code and have a straightforward, non-discretionary, objective standard for pre-nineteen seventy-four construction. Basically, in the research that he did, prior to July one, nineteen seventy-four, there really wasn't a window opening, door opening standard for bedroom egress. Um, so, after that time, if you looked at his analysis, it's fairly standard, it didn't vary too much over time. Uh, essentially, it's about four square feet, up from maybe, uh, I guess the dimensions would be twenty-two by twenty, and, uh, four, four square feet. And in terms of the, the height of the sill, um, it was a forty-four inches in the current code. And with, at the addition of a step, he provided some flexibility to get higher. But it has to be a permanent step, part of the structure. So, if you are in agreement, um, this ord, the two thousand fourteen dash oh-seven goes into effect on January one. So, the normal ordinance process to do first reading and second reading and wait thirty days for effectiveness will essentially cause a twenty-two day delay and inconsistency in the operation of the licensing program, which is starting, basically. And those standards were all set up to go into effect on July one. So, the recommendation of staff is that in order to avoid that administrative nightmare of having a different standard for twenty-two days, that we go ahead and accept this amendment and declare it as an emergency so that it could go into effect in time for the effective date of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash oh-seven. Um, the other changes that are set forth in this ordinance are simply the housekeeping changes that we were making, um, to the ordinance, um, providing some clarification. As you recall, one of them was, uh, if you have a landscape feature that is basically steps in the yard, that's not something that under these standards require you to put up a railing. But if it was some kind of feature that led to the main access, yes, it would require it. Uh, so, staff had sought those clarifications previously, and if, uh, you don't wanna have that standard, those standards delayed either, we'd ask for that to be added. I don't have anything to read, um, I just, except for the, the title, first, second, and then if you're, if you wanna do it, then I'd ask you to separately make a declaration of emergency between first and second.
Okay. Uh, why don't we make a motion and then discuss?
Well, I can do the first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, please.
So, this is the first reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirty, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title five, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, Chapter five point one-four, Vacation Rental Dwelling License, amending section five point one-four, point oh-six-oh, paragraph B, four-B, adding alternative window and door egress standard for pre-nineteen seventy-four construction, adding provision for a corrective order and declaring an emergency. Um, and so, we'd be looking for motion for approval of first reading and then go proceed the second reading. And I'll, I'll point out the corrective order, uh, provision I just mentioned in the title is, uh, where deficiencies are mentioned or identified. Uh, staff wanted to give the applicants, uh, up to a hundred eighty days to make the correction. That was already the standard in one of the paragraphs here for building code compliance. So, if staff identified a, an egress window, we just wanted to make clear that for any of these building code type safety issues, that you could enter into an agreement where we agree to a reasonable period of time. And because most of this would be the building official, we have building official, but planning director is also listed.
Good. Thank you.
I'd move we accept the first reading of two thousand fourteen thirty.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve with a second discussion. Couple things. One, it certainly clarifies and takes some of that subjectivity out of it, and I, that, I'm happy to hear that. I'd like to see the standard in.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I think it's, it's real good.
Good. Any other comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Norikus.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot to put in my motion and request the second reading, sorry.
So, do we need to declare an emergency, a motion to declare?
At least, it's been my practice, we've only done one emergency here before, and so I'm not familiar with how Joan used to do it. But my recommendation is you just make a motion to declare an emergency based upon the impending effective date of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash oh-seven, um, and the need to have consistent standards for application for the licensing program. You find that to be an emergency, and someone make the motion and second it and go from there.
So moved.
I'll second it. I'm not gonna repeat it.
Yeah. Agreed. Discussion? And makes very logical sense to get those dates lined up, so.
Just a question, does this, that doesn't include the second reading, though, does it?
No.
This is just the emergency.
Right.
Roll call, please.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Eggleton.
Yes.
And Norikus.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
This is the second reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirty, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title five, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, Chapter five point one-four, Vacation Rental Dwelling License, amending section five point one-four, oh-six-oh, paragraph B, four-B, adding alternative window and door egress standard for pre-nineteen seventy-four construction, adding provision for a corrective order and declaring an emergency. Ask for approval of second reading and, uh, adoption of the ordinance as an emergency enactment. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance as an emergency enactment.
I move that we adopt, or approve second reading and adopt ordinance number 2014-30 with the declaring an emergency.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion with a second, discussion? Roll call, please.
Norikus?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Eggleton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then we have ordinance number 2014-31, and this is first reading.
This is first reading of ordinance number 2014-31, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan to change the Comprehensive Plan map designation from the medium-density residential R 7.5 district to the open-space OS district, and amending the zoning map to change the zoning map designation from single-family residential R 1 7.5 zone to the open-space OS zone on a 35.4 acre tract of land in the villages of Cascadehead planned unit development. Ask for approval of first reading of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second it.
We have a motion with a second to approve first reading of ordinance 2014-31, discussion?
The 31 or 32, Your Honor?
Actually, it's 31, I think it was a misprint on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And pretty much discussion when we had the public hearing, but anything you want to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I'll go ahead. I mean, I know it's, it was advertised as the 35.4 acres, but I really wish that we would include the rest of that, the Pod N to the west, I would feel much more comfortable. But I, I will accept this, but it would have made me happier.
Yeah, well, I think, again, you know, get this on the books and get it, you, that done, and perhaps future councils can add to it, especially, I think, as more of the visioning goes on, on the villages and what potential is, and the financial aspects of it, so.
This is going to be developed next week.
Yes, it's, yeah, you may grow old waiting. Any other discussion? I'll remind the remaining councils about it in a couple weeks.
There you go.
Come back as comments. Roll call, please. This is for first reading.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Norikus?
Yes.
And Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we do the second reading of that, so that this council completes that process?
Yes, I'm prepared to do that.
Very good.
This is the second reading of ordinance 2014-31, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan map to change the Comprehensive Plan map designation from the medium-density residential R 7.5 district to the open-space OS district, and amending the zoning map to change the zoning map designation from the single-family residential R 1 7.5 zone to the open-space OS zone on a 35.4 acre tract of land in the villages of Cascadehead planned unit development. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2014-31.
That includes approval of second reading?
And approval of second reading.
Well, okay, an approval of second reading and adoption.
And I second that.
We have a motion to approve second reading and adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Quant?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Eggleton?
Yes.
Norikus?
Yes.
And Sprague?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much, thank you, gentlemen. Public comments, has to be a time, again, for anyone who wishes to make a public comment? Seeing none, then, gentlemen, any tonight, Councilor Sprague, any comments?
Yeah, I do have. I want to express my appreciation for this council and the members of the council that will no longer be here after the first of the year, for the opportunity to work with you guys. It's, it's been a nice ride. Thank you.
I second that motion.
I guess I'd like to thank everybody for putting up with me on the council, and I enjoyed it very much. And then I do have one thing yet from the citizens, and they say, one quarter of the city's streetlights are still out, and they'd like somebody to do something about it. And Mr. Hawker said that he had talked to Chief Killian, and his officers were going to stop and get the number off the poles of the streetlights that were on, and give it to him, and I was wondering if that's being done.
It's a work in progress, we're working on the north end, Public Works is doing the same inventory from the south end, and at one moment, we shall meet in the middle somewhere.
Thank you.
You, you might maybe give some expectations to your citizens who are inquiring, or citizen, you know, give it some time, so it's good to keep asking, but in reality, you know, it's probably going to be a month, or come spring, when you don't need streetlights, you know, that's when they'll. Mr. Quant?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right. Mr. Ryan?
I echo those sentiments entirely. See, I even have my Christmas tie on.
You do have a hat and Christmas tie.
Counting down.
Yes. Mr. Norikus?
Same sentiments, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, I have a couple of things, one, besides holiday greetings, I have a couple of requests, if I could, for those still listening. This is not a city committee, but another vital organization needs some volunteers, and this is the Friends of the Driftwood Public Library are looking for volunteers, both the, both those interested in a leadership role of the Friends of the Board, as well as those interested in volunteering at the Friends Book Sale. The book sale takes place every Monday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., as well as on the third Saturday of every month. The Friends are instrumental in providing funding for library programming, including all summer reading performers and prizes, the Oregon Legacy Author Series and other author events. All proceeds from the book sale go to fund the library programs. If you are interested in volunteering, please email driftwoodfriends@gmail.com, or stop by the library for information. And again, it's not a city committee, but they certainly play a vital role for the expanded use of the library. Also, again, just a pitch for city committees, a lot of the committees' terms, committee individuals' terms end at the end of the calendar year, so it's an awkward time to renew, so I'd encourage everybody that's interested to get their applications in, so that the new council can fill those spots to keep the councils, or the committees functioning. And with that, gentlemen, I do request that you who are leaving the council attend the January 12 meeting, it should be short, you'll just be turning over, being the quorum, and then turning over your seat to the newly-elected. Even though it's a National Football League game with Oregon-Alabama playing, soon to be, we'll just be out of it early. So with that, call it an evening, thank you.